"God of many names and God beyond all names, we stand before you as we fight for this city to recognize the worth, the dignity, of every human being and their right to a decent living wage. We pray that you give us the strength, the courage, and the persistence to hold our elected officials accountable to do the next right thing today and in the days ahead. And we pray also that our neighboring communities will have the courage and the strength to do the same. Amen."
My name is Deborah Bullock and I'm the pastor at St. Mark's Episcopal Church here in Evanston. And I'm here because part of my faith tradition is about respecting the dignity of every human being. And the beginning, just the beginning of how we can do that is to ensure that everybody has the bare minimum to be able to live in this fabulous city. I moved here six and a half years ago because of the diversity. And to see the city again and again talk about diversity but not do the basic things that are needed in order to move us towards being equitable makes me sad and heartbroken. And so I am so grateful to be able to be a part of a community that can bring out this kind of gathering on such short notice when the city council is trying to sneak something through.
Hi, I'm Claudia Travis. I'm a resident of Evanston. I've always been a resident kind of of this area, of the North Rogers Park area. I'm just here because I support, I support a living wage. Basically, the sticker says it all. I'm here because I think it was very shady, the way they called this quote-unquote "emergency meeting," after things were pretty much settled, that we would be doing the right thing.
I'm with the Evanston NAACP and with Second Baptist Church of Evanston. I'm here to plead the cause of those who are often not able to plead for themselves or to stand for themselves, and that is those who are at minimum wage. We think that it's important for the minimum wage to be raised so that the quality of life for those who are living that way can be raised as well, so that some people can afford to rent in Evanston that are not able to do so right now. We think that they are contributing citizens and residents of our town and that they deserve this kind of just cause for moving in the right direction and not in the wrong direction. So we want to lend that emphasis to the mayor and to city council and to let them know with everybody who is here that it's time for that kind of change. It's time for our folks to lean down and to lift up those, some who are not able to lift themselves.
I want to see what people have to say. And, you know, I just don't agree on what the county has done, this $10 minimum wage. I think there should be minimum wage as far as, you know, to tell us how much to pay our people and jamming down our throat, I don't think it's right. And then also, it's that I train a lot of people. And what folks don't understand, majority of these people in here, if not all of them, have never had a business or made a payroll in their life, you know? And that's, and they don't know what it takes. I own a restaurant. We operate on small margins, very small margins. And for me to have to pay, especially I'm training people, to pay $10 an hour, plus I have to have somebody train them that make $11 an hour, it's $22 an hour. And most of these people that we're talking about are people that they might be with you two or three weeks and my money goes in the net. Now, I would agree on this if, you know, if the $10 an hour worked this way, you bring them in at minimum wage of $8.50, $8.75, you train them, they stick with you for six months, then you take them to $10. Then after six months, they stay with you, you take them a little bit higher. But to jam the stuff down our throat is not right.
Because I believe in the living wage. I believe that the minimum wage should be at least $10. And I believe Evanston's a bunch of hypocrites that pass a tax referendum but won't raise the minimum wage. They pass the tax referendum to keep their property values intact and raise their property values. But what about the poor renters whose landlords are going to raise their property values?
Hi, I'm Ted Smucker. I'm the manager of Organizing for Open Communities. We support housing, social, and economic justice. And this is really a moral issue, both a moral issue and a business issue. And talking to you, Nina, we had a press conference here where David Boris, an enlightened businessman from Health Kitchen Catering, has, pays way above that and is talking about you need to have more demand. When workers are paid better, they spend it in their communities of low-wage workers. We need to, we also had the clergy of Evanston come out to support this because it's a fundamentally moral and religious issue. We had Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky. We had Larry Sufferden, the Cook County Commissioner, who wrote and led the fight in the county to pass these ordinances that raise the minimum wage, offers paid sick leave. And that voted, that vote in the county was 12 to 3. The chambers of commerce in the suburbs are putting fright into these trustees and aldermen. And we need to pay attention to how they're voting because they'll be up for reelection too. So thank you.
What is your name and why are you here?
I'm Isidro Lucas. I'm here because I believe in people and Evanston should be about people.
I'm Susan Lewis Friedman from Betham at Senegal. And we're here today because we believe that we should have an affordable wage for people in our town. We talk all the time about how people can't afford to live here because of the expensive housing. And we need to pay people so that they can live and they can pull themselves off and they can have a decent life. And to hear the people who are on minimum wage and are homeless, it's just outrageous. We are better than that. It's in our values that we want to live. And we believe as religious leaders that we have to stand up for what our values are. $10 an hour still is not going to be enough for people, but at least we're moving off. And to opt out of an ordinance that Cook County has developed is really outrageous. We believe that we need to say no to that. And we know that our city will vote for that which is right, but we have to stand up because if they don't hear the voices of citizens, they don't hear the voices of clergy saying what is right for our city, then we don't know what could happen behind closed doors. So we're not going to allow that to happen.
I appreciate taking the time to ensure that Evanston continues to be the best position to responsibly embrace and execute legislation that improves upon the well-being of our community. In light of several of our neighboring and sometimes competing communities officially opting out of the county minimum wage and sick leave ordinance, that's something you could boo to. I felt incumbent upon my responsibilities as mayor to offer up to our own community and council an opportunity to directly discuss and address this important, time-sensitive matter that will inevitably impact our residents, businesses, and economy. The furtherance of an open, transparent, and honest government was a pillar of my campaign, and I stand by that promise today and will do so so long as I remain the mayor. To ensure that everyone very clearly understands my personal position on the minimum wage and sick leave ordinance, it's simple. And that which I have reinforced since I initiated my campaign, I will reinforce it again right now. I currently support the implementation of the Cook County ordinance. I believe that we benefit from a workforce that is respected, treated, and compensated fairly. Many, many have unfortunately and mistakenly interpreted my call for an open and transparent dialogue on this issue as a modification to that position. That could not be further from the truth. My position currently remains as it has been and as has been articulated many times over. Nonetheless, since assuming office and with an absolute willingness and obligation to listen to the many diverse voices of our community, have come to understand that not all share my sentiment, particularly as the dynamics of the legislation reveals itself and neighboring communities opt out. I've called this meeting to foster dialogue and to allow the community to listen to those voices, along with the many voices of those that I know that share my current position on the topic. The discussion over the past two days on this subject has been heated in some quarters of the community. On the issue directly before us, should the city of Evanston opt out of the Cook County minimum wage and sick leave statute set to go into effect tomorrow, Saturday, July 1st, for a short period to further discuss the implications of this law in Evanston? I believe the community has spoken loud and clear. No.
... ordinance to take effect. And I think that was collectively the intention all along. As other communities started to, I'll call it snowball, the issue was getting more coverage. And I was hearing from people in the community, different questions. Why aren't we opting in, for example? And it was apparent that businesses, individuals, and people in the community didn't fully understand what was happening. And, you know, while we've had a long time to do something about this, in my mind, we didn't really need to do anything because it was just going to happen. So the, you know, the mayor's suggesting that we have a meeting to bring this to everyone's attention so we could get clarity, we could get information out to people. Seemed like a good idea. And, you know, my policy is I will listen to everybody. And I will not tell anybody that I'm not going to listen to them. If you want me to say I'm going to disregard somebody else, it's not going to happen. But I appreciate, I appreciate what everybody's, you know, put forth here. And I appreciate the effort of the county to try to do a broader implementation here all along. It's been my belief that we should be doing something on a statewide and nationwide basis. I know that Congresswoman Schakowsky has been working very hard for an extended period of time in very challenging circumstances. Same thing with our state legislators.
I absolutely and very firmly support the minimum wage increase. As I did last October when I testified before the Cook County Board in support of Commissioner Sufferden's ordinance. Continuing beyond that understanding that even the $13 is not a livable wage here in Evanston. My full-time work and my service is to help low-income entrepreneurs and other residents to increase their skill set and have better opportunities, working with the city to make sure that we include minority women and local businesses in contracting and procurement opportunities and focusing on this as my full-time work. So I'm excited that Evanston is owning up to everything that we say that we are, that we will not be opting out. And thank you all for coming.
And speaking for myself, I think many people in this room, the people that I have selected to represent, our principles and values are not subject to the whims of the eligible men or Skokie. The city of Evanston should be a leader, not a follower, going forward.
So good morning, everyone, and thank you also for coming to demonstrate your strong support for the minimum wage increase and the sick leave portions of this ordinance. And I am strongly in support of Evanston being part of this effort going forward to ensure that workers in Evanston are able to make a better living. I think, I know a lot of people were caught by surprise that we were having this meeting today and feel that it's perhaps should have happened earlier, perhaps was unnecessary. But I am glad we are having this conversation. It's brought a lot of attention to the issue in general and for Evanston in particular. And I think it's an opportunity for us in Evanston to send a really strong message to the greater Chicago land and to those communities who opted out of the ordinance and then also to Oak Park, that it's going to be making its decision later today, to say this ordinance is the way to go, this increase in the minimum wage. I found it really interesting. I know probably a lot of you read the article that was in the Chicago Tribune a couple of days ago that seemed to indicate, based on a report from Seattle, that this increasing the minimum wage had negative implications, impacts on workers. And so that caused me to then read a couple of the other articles that were forwarded to us. I read the very interesting article from the Center on Wage and Employment Dynamics that came out just earlier this month. And it reinforced the message that increasing the minimum wage is really a great benefit to workers and doesn't have to have a negative impact on job opportunities. So I'm really glad we're going to be moving forward with this here in Evanston. And I look forward to our discussion about how we can ensure that as it moves forward and is implemented, that it truly does help our workforce and also that we have ways to help our business community.
Paul Monroe.
Well, I have mixed feelings about this meeting and I felt that it should be canceled because I felt that we should have opted in and by canceling them, we would have opted in. And I believe our energies, look at the energies that it took to get everybody out here. People should be working and earning a living rate, wage, not leaving their jobs and coming to a meeting that was called for no reason when we were going to opt in anyway.
Even with us opting in, there are some things that we need to address in Evanston. So if we look at our unemployment rates, which I did this morning, based on the 2015 numbers, our unemployment rate for our black community is 14.1%. For our white community, it's 5.5%. For our Latino community, it's 7.7%. We have over 5,000 Evanston residents with no health insurance. We have over 8,000 households that make under $35,000 a year. Our median income for a household for white residents is $86,000. For black residents, it's $43,000. So I'm glad you all are here, glad we're opting in. $10 is not enough, but we need to be real with ourselves here in Evanston. We need to talk about the racial and socioeconomic disparities we have. We need to stop rallying and being reactive. We need to participate. We need to hold our elected officials, including myself, responsible for things we say during council meetings, for things we say on the street, for commitments we make to you, you know, at whatever time it is, because you elected us. And so I'm happy to see you here, but I'm going to push you all further. You need to be here next council meeting, July the 10th, when we talk about our equity plan. We're going to see what our commitment is to moving forward with a real equity plan that addresses race. We can't act like we, we can't act like race is not as good in Evanston. And we all live through the diversity. If you look at where we live, we have communities that are 97% white. So let's stop talking about the diversity and let's move past and get some real equity here. I'm also going to encourage you all to come to the live bit. So at 10, at 5 o'clock, we're talking about equity. And then whenever our city council meeting comes up, we're going to look at some estimated budget numbers. Our city manager has some concerns. We live in the state of Illinois, so we don't have to talk about our budgetary concerns. So he is graciously going to put together some budget numbers for 2018. If you really care about this community and want to see what we care about, you need to come make your voice heard and we start talking about the budget. That'll start July, that'll start July the 10th, and then we will roll through. Wally does a great job of having some town hall meetings about the budget. And the ninth ward, we will have a ward meeting talking about the budget. But please do not email me after the budget is passed and complain. That is not, I'm just going to be honest with you, that's not helpful because the budget is passed. If you want to participate, if you want to make changes, community, you have to engage with your elected leaders, not just at your 45-minute comment time here, but as issues come up. You can reach us all, please don't knock on our doors, but you can email us, you can call us, we live very close. So you have to take some responsibility and you have to make your voice heard. Sometimes you do have to rally, and I'm all about a good rally, but just participate a little earlier. And I say that because I've sat there and that's why I sit here now, because I got tired of rallying, so I decided to make some decisions. But nonetheless, I think everyone up here is up here because we do care about the community, whether you voted for us or not. And so give us the benefit of the doubt and be a little early, participate early, come on July 10th. That will show me really what our commitment is, what we're going to do with equity and what we're going to start talking about with our budget. So let's start that on July the 10th. Thank you.
The issues that come to us at council and work on police issues and homelessness issues and affordable housing issues, it all comes down to jobs. It's jobs. And you can't expect to solve the big problems that we face if people aren't making a living wage. Now, I will, as a former small business owner, running a mom-and-pop store with my husband, we paid our help $15 an hour. That's still not enough. That's not enough to support a family or put a child through school. It's, it's not enough, but it is a start.
This meeting, I want to acknowledge that and apologize that I didn't have an opportunity to respond to all the emails and phone calls. I want to thank Congresswoman Jan Schakowsky, State Senator Dan Biss, President Tony Kline-Winkle, Cook County Commissioner Larry Sufferden, along with many others who reached out to me on this very important issue. I want to share my support for the various statements. I couldn't agree more with the importance of this meeting. So for those that have waited for the time, as well as my fellow colleagues, I think it is a very valuable moment in the history of Evanston when we take advantage of it to do the necessary education, because it's going to take more than the energy and support in this room. And that's going to have to carry over July 1st in making sure that we support our local businesses. And I think it would be remiss if I didn't share it, that with this increase, we will need to support our businesses and some of us will have to change our behavior.
I do think that this is a testament to what Evanston is as a community and always has been. If you look around the room, you can just think that each one of you represents at least 10 more people. I've talked with many of you and I've written to many of you. I'm sorry if I'm not able to get back in touch with all of you who have written or emailed me or called me in the last 24 hours. I really appreciate the engagement. I have always been a longtime supporter of raising the minimum wage and improving sick leave policies, and I continue to support that. And I believe that very strongly that we should stay in, we should not opt out. As you heard, we now stand alone. And we stand alone in this, but we are all part of a very large economy. And as much as we think this should be statewide, and I support the efforts of making it statewide and it should be national, we have a system that when the minimum wage was first established, should have been, it should have been indexed. So we should never have been in the situation of having the distortion of much too low a minimum wage that has created an economy that we all benefit from in the sense of there being very cheap labor, which is unfair to our workers. So we are, we are alone in this, but together as a community, we have to work together to make sure that our local businesses can weather this and continue to thrive. Retail is suffering right now, and it's suffering because of the internet. And we all participate in that. But if you can buy it locally, you must buy it locally and not off the internet. I have businesses in my ward that give you the best, most personalized service and tell you what you should buy and how you should buy it, and then people can use their store or get money from the internet. That's not fair. And so if you can buy it in Evanston, you must buy it. That is absolutely critical. That's critical so that these workers who are earning this new minimum wage continue to have employment and that these businesses that are now paying the minimum wage and the sick leave continue to thrive and have these employees. We all are participating in this larger economy. We've changed the playing field somewhat here in Evanston because it's our value, but we need to make sure that the other aspects of that playing field are improved for both the worker and the business.
The general consensus, right, in Evanston is that people need a higher minimum wage. And that has played itself out in referendums that have been voted on in the past and everything else. There was confidence that lots of communities were going to, you know, do nothing, not opt out, but in essence, do nothing, so that they would opt in come tomorrow with a new $10 minimum wage here in Cook County. And recently, on Monday, Will Met didn't do that. They decided to opt out. So they're going to still offer $8.25 come tomorrow. That is, that is not, that is not Evanston, right? What are we offering tomorrow? $10 an hour, right here, you heard it unanimously from this council up here. But that happened on Monday. On Wednesday, we learned that Skokie was going to be putting an ordinance out for discussion at a meeting coming up next week, I think it's July 5th. 6, excuse me, July, I'm glad you guys know that date, all right? Because we don't want to be an island. And there's a tremendous amount of, you know, advocacy and energy in this room, and that needs to be transferred to Skokie. That helps protect our businesses. You're looking for something to do? There you go. Go to Skokie and put pressure on Skokie and make sure that they understand the importance of increasing the minimum wage. And then we also learned on Wednesday that tonight at 5 o'clock, there's a similar discussion that is being had here in Oak Park, right? Another community that we sort of hold up as a sister community to Evanston, and they're having that. So hopefully, the stand that Alderman took here today is one that we see happen in Oak Park tonight at 5, at 5 o'clock. But there was another, there was another conversation or meeting on Wednesday evening with our Economic Development Committee, okay? And this issue was raised there at the Economic Development Committee. Some of our aldermen had heard from businesses who said, wait a second, aren't we going to have a conversation about this? And so that precipitated this meeting. We think it's really important to practice good government in Evanston.
I'm so proud to hear from each one of our elected officials, from the mayor. And I'm especially proud that all of these wonderful people from Evanston are here today. Yes, it was a sacrifice, but I'm telling you, this is what really makes a difference in our country, not just in our city, the citizen involvement. And, you know, as much as I hear it was a sacrifice for some people, it also sent a very important signal that, you know, when these kinds of issues come up, that the community wants to be and is engaged. And so it's very important that everyone is here. I want to thank Commissioner Sufferden for introducing and fighting and helping pass the ordinance that will make a difference in so many people's lives tomorrow. I want to tell you that were the legislature not in session, that Daniel Biss, Robin Gabel, and Laura Fine would also be here today. We sent out a joint statement about this. So what makes us all so proud of Evanston is that we are this progressive and caring community. We don't wait to see what others are doing. We take responsibility for our community. I really appreciate what Alderman Fleming had to say because I think we talk a lot about we celebrate our diversity in every way, racially, economically, ethnically, religiously. But I think you're right, that if we take that seriously, then there are a lot of issues that we need to pay attention to and show up for. Showing up really matters. Let me say, Mayor Harrigan, showing up matters. And, you know, yes, at the federal level, we certainly are having a problem. But I want to tell you that what is happening outside the Congress of the United States today is more important and effective than what's happening inside the Congress today. It's not an accident that that bill was withdrawn on that horrible, terrible healthcare, healthcare legislation and we have to keep fighting. Okay, so I want, but here's, here's what I, what I want to say. I mean, I'm proud, every day in the city of Evanston, there's a soup kitchen that we have. People voted overwhelmingly, even though they don't have kids in the school system, to raise our school funding. That's who we are here in Evanston. I believe that we can be a beacon, as we have in the past, not waiting to see what other people do, but to say, we believe that people in Evanston deserve, and all of you have said it today, deserve, well, you know, $10 an hour. $8.25 an hour makes $17,000 a year. $10 makes about $20,000 a year. It's really not a, a living wage, but it certainly is helpful. And so though we're not going to pass it as much as we try at the federal level to raise the minimum wage, state legislators are fighting to do that. It's not going to happen. You have taken the opportunity, and I'm so proud of that, to say we can do something, at least for the people in our town. We can do something. At least for the people in our town, we can do something to improve in a substantial way their livelihoods and their lives. And so I thank you for that. And I, I do want to point out that as much as we worry maybe about competition from others, right across our border, tomorrow, the city of Chicago is raising its minimum wage to $11 an hour. So, you know, maybe, maybe it's another time that then, then we can talk about what else we, we can do. Maybe we can do even better. People in Evanston voted 88 percent on a referendum to raise the minimum wage, 89 percent to have paid, earned, earned paid leave. I want to make that point. You earn one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours that you work. So it takes 40 weeks to even get five days of, of paid leave if your kids are sick or you have an elderly parent or you're sick yourself. So this is, this is a great thing. This is a great day for Evanston. I really thank you, Mayor Haggerty, for this opportunity for our Aldermen to speak out and an opportunity for us to all organize for the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I gave to the clerk a letter from President Tony Preckwinkle expressing her concerns about the ordinances pending, but in it, it talks about her commitment to economic development and, and the need for us to work together. I often start talks by saying, I represent you in the best functioning large government left in Illinois. We, like the city of Evanston, have a balanced budget. We pay our bills, we pay our pension costs. We have programs to try to improve the quality of lives of our citizens. Unfortunately, we live in Illinois. When I passed this bill, this ordinance in the city, in the county board, I said, I hope that we would get the federal government and the state government to do something about the minimum wage. On Monday of this week, the Senate sent to the governor Senate Bill 81, which is a bill that passed both houses of the General Assembly. It gets to $15 an hour in minimum wage by 2022. So it's a, a longer ramp than what's in our bill, which only gets to $13 an hour. But it is something we should all be putting pressure on the governor to sign because we all want a level playing field. I introduced this ordinance because I was going down Howard Street one day and I realized that on one side of the street, people were making $10.50 and on our side, they were making $8.25. That's not right. Our competition, I believe, is not Will Met, by the way. I really believe it is the city of Chicago. The one thing I want you to realize is that when Chicago passed its minimum wage ordinance and its sick leave ordinance, the business group said, you don't have the power to do it. They've said the same things about us, but you know what? Nobody went to court because they realized they would lose in court. And after a while, the Chicagoland Chamber of Commerce realized that the Chicago businesses were getting a more stable workforce, that, that one was better trained, many of them educated in our schools, because I think we export more workers than we, we, we import at that level of, of employment. And they decided, well, we'll, we'll live with it because we're benefiting from it. Today, we're going to try to level that playing field, even though there's a dollar difference between the minimum wage that goes into effect tomorrow. The Illinois Constitution gave us this opportunity to have this discussion today because it says, you as a home rule unit and the county as the only home rule county in the state, when we have a conflict, you can have an ordinance. If the conflict is different, we'll go with your ordinance, not ours. I thank you for not passing a conflicting ordinance today. Both of our governments are the safety net governments of this state. We are the ones who protect people. We do it through healthcare primarily. You do it for the other services, especially the housing services that you provide to individual residents. One of the things that this increase in minimum wage will do is it will give people more money to one, be able to pay what that affordable rent should be, because all the studies show you can't make it at $8.25 an hour. And it will help in our system, people make the co-pays that are necessary under many of the healthcare plans that are out there. I thank you for the opportunity to be here and I thank this community, right? We are very fortunate to live in a community where participatory democracy is not just a phrase, it is action. And, and while people may disagree with us, it is a respectful discussion. I just talked with Jim Shermerhorn, who's the president of the Evanston Chamber of Commerce. And Jan and I and the other state officials often appear before that Chamber of Commerce. I look forward to having conversations with them and with you on things we can do to improve the quality of business climate here in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Evanston. I have two little girls here, go to Washington School. I also own a sketchbook brewing company. Only three years in the business, almost three years, I should say. We're very proud to employ for our size, a large number of employees, going 10, 11, two openings. And when it comes to paying the minimum wage, we, we are beyond that. We built our business around that, having the community having good people's degree in industrial relations. Prior to my formal education, I was a factory worker in neighboring Morton Grove, Illinois. I was the president of United Auto Workers locally at 90. And when I hear a discussion about business interests, I have to put it in context. And I have to put it in the context that for the past 36 or 37 years, business interests have pretty much had their way with all branches of government and at all levels of government.
I'm Elliot. I'm the chair of the Democratic Party of Evanston. We were, thank you. We were among the grassroots organizations that reached out to many of you in the audience and asked you to come and asked you to express your views to our alderpeople about this ordinance. And I just want to thank you so much. I mean, the showing that our community has put forward is tremendous. And I want to thank the council, each and every one of you. And as a body, it is a really remarkable statement that you resisted the wave and that you did it unanimously. And I commend to you that we, I personally, and the Democratic Party of Evanston, will work to push back, expand the living wage in other communities and expand living wage countywide, expand living wage statewide. And I would ask everybody in the audience to help in that effort. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Elliot Sation. I'm active with two organizations that have been very involved in this whole struggle. One is the People's Lobby that worked with Larry Sufferton. And I've been working with actively with the justice team of the Open Communities Organization, which has tried to make the various villages on the North Shore more open to all the people who work and live there. And paying a decent wage to people who work in your community is one way to welcome them. Now, you asked for some suggestions. I'm going to give a real quick run through it. Affordable housing is your number one priority. That would make a lot of difference for people who are working over jobs. Number two, another issue that's coming up, on-demand scheduling. That many big companies require of their employees and threaten to fire them if they don't show up. There are communities that are beginning to deal with this issue. We could deal with that here. We could also catch up with the Chicago minimum wage if we wanted. We have home rule powers, we could do that. I don't know whether the city will be giving subsidies in, as they did in the past, to attract businesses here, but in the past, generally, they did not ask for commitments on the employment side. And when we canvassed, we found a lot of people said, why don't they give priority to people who live in Evanston when they advertise their jobs? One place that did it was Valley and they apparently done very well. So that's another thing. I think it was Robin or Sicily mentioned, there are lots of programs in the city to help provide opportunities to learn about entrepreneurial skills, other kinds of life skills and economic skills. Do we make sure that people who work here know about those programs, are invited to come and it's made possible for them to attend them? We certainly could be doing that. Finally, if you're really concerned today about making sure that Skokie does not opt out, we're going to be phone banking nearby. And if anybody wants to come and talk to me, I'll tell you where to go. It's going to be very simple, but it will help us and it also will show that our community is concerned about other areas around. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allison McGuire. I'm in the ninth ward. I have slightly different feedback for you guys today. I do feel like this meeting was a colossal waste of time. I appreciate that you are all unanimously in support of this ordinance and I appreciate that you have given so many people here in this room a platform. But I believe, like our city clerk, that you have violated the Open Meetings Act. I will be filing a formal request for review if it's already being done. And I caution you, don't ever do this again. You are breaking trust with your constituents. You know, why are we here? You went around the council chamber and every one of you said that you were in support. So if that's true, then two things happened here. Either the upswell from the community, the pressure you had on social media, made you rethink your positions, or you just wanted to have a big rally and kumbaya in the council chamber on my time. Personally, I think you-
Good morning. My name is Melissa Blunt. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist and I think an emerging artist in the community. I just want to echo what Alderperson Fleming said and to be mindful of how we have the most vulnerable people that we're thinking about when you talk about $10 an hour. And $10 is just not enough. We, you know, are always asking our most vulnerable constituents to wait and to piecemeal their existence. And that is just disgusting behavior. And so I want to say, Mayor Haggerty, I think that it was really frightening for most people and like the woman who just spoke, to hear you all at election time say that you were going to vote for 15 and then have this discussion now, just seems really as if it's disingenuous. Because what you say and what really happens, there's a big, big disparity between us.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you.
I'm a small business owner and I echo, or I couldn't possibly atop what Melissa has said about the need to support our vulnerable communities here in Evanston. And I'm so glad to see that we're all supporting the increase in the minimum wage. I would also like to express my dismay at the way this meeting has been conducted. I think the manner in which it was called was illegal. And I specifically want to call out City Clerk Reed for his leadership on this issue. And I think he took a courageous and risky stand in taking leadership on this issue. So I hope that we all remember him as we go forward and continue to support his work. I'm glad of the outcome. I'm not confident that it would have been the same if we were not all here.
Thank you. Alex?
Good morning. Alex Morgan, 728 Hinman Avenue. And I also wanted to maybe state, when most people look at me, they don't think of somebody who works in any kind of business. I identify as an organizer, but it is June 30th. I was working yesterday to make sure that our organization of 40 folks made payroll today. So I, I did want to speak about that as something that I really care about when it comes to this issue. When we started our organization and thought about our values and what we were going to do, we made sure that our lowest level worker was making at least $15 an hour, received health insurance benefits, received time off upfront that they would need for sick leave as opposed to the, the earned sick leave, which we pointed out. I appreciate the conversation here this morning. I do have a suggestion because I started this open letter because we did learn about this and I wasn't going to call anybody at 11:30 on Wednesday night to start this open letter. And I know more than one Alderperson is probably frustrated with how this approach took place, just as we were frustrated with the timing of the meeting. I have 700 or so printed letters here for you, Mayor Haggerty. I'll share an electronic list with Alder folks so you can figure out how to get back to everyone who may not have directly reached out to you if you so choose. And I think these are folks who have expressed that they care about this issue, that they will invest back in our community.